Yep. Hi, Dan.
Bruce, how are you?
Good. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you feeling?
I'm feeling much better today. Thank you. Yeah.
I think the meeting went okay last night.
Oh, that's good. I was gonna ask, do you wanna say something about it?
Well, I think I did let him know you were sick and we basically talked about process and we're all committed to getting the getting things fixed in the heating system and the window, their doors there and we did talk about the buildings committee being, you know, obviously more involved and informed. You know, they had just gotten those estimates like thirty seconds before the meeting, so.
That's not good.
No, no.
Yeah.
So, we.
Yeah, but on the other hand, if they, I hope they took them under advisement, then spend some time with them and you know, if they have questions, they really need to do some research so we can figure out whether we're comparing apples to apples and stuff.
Absolutely, exactly. So hopefully, we're on a path now and hopefully, it's a good one.
Hi, Katie.
Hi, try that again. How's it going? Lots of meeting this week. The tough one.
Yeah.
It's another one Monday, too. Okay, here, you know what? Here. Go sit on the bed.
Katie.
Yes.
Do you think maybe I could make you a host with me so that you could watch for people if they're trying to connect in and all of that?
Sure. I'm on Zoom all day long, so.
All right, I would appreciate it just because sometimes it's hard for me to do both.
Sure, no problem.
All right, I'm getting there. All right.
Good evening. Hello.
Hello.
Hi, did you cut your hair, Katie?
I did. I donated a whole foot of it a couple of weeks ago.
It looks awesome and congratulations for donating it, too.
Someone out there is gonna be wearing it.
All right.
Oh, I'll apologize ahead of time that there's nobody else home to deal with this crazy puppy, so. I just gave her a bone full of peanut butter and I'm hoping that that's gonna keep her occupied for a little bit.
At this point with Zoom meetings, I think people are kind of used to that, right?
Probably. I don't know. My solution to crazy puppy is I'm getting another one next week.
Oh, so cute.
As a friend, it will be better, right?
Sure, that's what we tell ourselves, Katie.
We'll see how that goes.
Here's the most important question. Do they fall asleep to fish music?
Uh, she sleeps in my daughter's room, so probably not. Or Harry Styles, I would bet.
Well, he does have a sense of style, so. Rockin' the feather boa.
Oh, yeah.
So Katie, maybe the next person that tries to come in, you can admit them and make sure you're working as co-host.
Sure, I didn't see a notice that I was made co-host.
No?
Usually get a little thing.
Can you check it on participants to see if it shows that you are?
Doesn't say anything.
No, I can try again. Mine says you are.
Now I can admit people.
Okay, good. I'll let you do that. Thank you, Katie, for doing that.
Sure, no problem. Oh.
All right, so there are three of us here. Is Trevor on?
No.
Okay. I believe he's coming though, right?
As far as I know, yes.
All right, well, we'll give him a minute because we need Trevor.
Otherwise, we could volunteer Katie.
I am a terrible note taker. I don't think anybody wants that.
And she's got a job. She's co-hosting. Here he comes.
Here's Trevor. All right, whoo, got off that one.
Perfect timing, Trevor. Can you hear me? Okay, you tell me when you're ready. You're ready.
Hi, Trevor.
All right, we've got a lot to get through, so I would like to call the meeting to order at seven oh one. Any public hearings? None. Just reviewing the agenda and perpetual calendar, two things, just so we're aware, the MOA where we're going to have a discussion and vote, we will probably go into executive session to further discussion and come back into open public session for the vote. Is that okay with you, Jen? Jennifer?
Yes.
And then as far as the perpetual calendar, everything looks like it's pretty much in target. The discussion of the school choice votes and all of that, so we should be good. All right, moving on to warrants and gifts.
I have two warrants.
You wanna read those numbers and amounts?
I sure do. I've got payroll warrant number three nineteen in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-nine cents. I already sent these to Trevor.
Thank you.
And I have a warrant number three zero two one in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents.
All right, so let the record show the two warrants and amounts, and Trevor has those as well. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty-fifth?
I move to approve the minutes.
All right, and is there a second?
I can second.
Any discussion amendments? Yes, Stephen?
For the first time in nearly seven years, I have an amendment to the minutes.
Excellent.
The warrants number, um. Never mind. I take that back.
All right, seeing no amendments or changes, all in favor? Aye. Okay, Stephen, was that an aye for you?
That's an aye for me.
Okay, and that is everyone, so there's no abstentions and nobody said no. Unfinished business and updates, let's talk about reopening.
So I can speak to that, which was also part of my superintendent's report. As we know, the Board of Education and Secretary Pfizer gave Commissioner Riley on March fifth, the authority to return to school fully in person. The vote by the board was eight to three. And this, this change will entail students in elementary schools returning on April fifth and students in middle schools returning on April twenty-eighth, with high school to be determined. As part of these regulations, they continue with the DESI guidance regarding the three feet distance in classrooms being a safe standard for physical distancing based on guidelines from the World Health Organization, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and now, I believe, the CDC. And additionally, we will continue to support the COVID guidelines that the commissioner has established over the course of the year. We will return on the fifth, fully in person, to note that the hybrid model and remote model will no longer count for structured learning time hours. The only exception would be parents or guardians may choose to have their own children learn remotely through the end of this year only. But schools may not provide any other options than fully remote, and these new regulations have the force of law, so we are busy planning for a return to fully in person in all of our Union twenty-eight schools. The principals have been very busy crafting their plans to make sure that we are ready to return. So I can take any questions regarding the reopening, but that's the brief overview of the vote from the board and the commissioner.
Also, I just want to say in my principal's report, I have more specifics about the school, so that might answer those specific questions at that point.
Thanks, Jackie.
And Jennifer, I guess I really should have asked you initially, would you like to do your principal's report now? Just because I know, or I'm sorry, superintendent's report now, because I know you have lots going on.
Yeah, I would be most appreciative of that. Thank you, Dan. Yes, so all of our schools in Union twenty-eight at this point are returned to a hybrid model and all of the principals are prepared to return to fully in person on April fifth. Additionally, for information, the MCAS test dates have switched and been pushed forward by the state from April to May, and I asked Pam to send out on my behalf a letter from Mass Association of School Superintendents with a position statement relative to MCAS, asking the state to reconsider the MCAS this year in particular, you know, given the issues of the pandemic and all that families, students, and staff have been through. It seems like this year would not be the year to be concentrating energy on the MCAS. So I'm hopeful that the Mass Association of School Committees advocacy, the superintendent's advocacy, and advocacy on the part of our, especially our legislators out in Western Mass, will have some effect on what will happen with the MCAS. And that, that's my superintendent's report unless anyone else has any other questions.
Any questions from anyone? All right, Jennifer, thank you for coming to the meeting, and I understand you'll be leaving and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Dan. I really appreciate that.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, Jackie, was there anything more on the reopening? That was it, right?
Well, I, my, my report is basically just an update on all of that, so I can either wait or go now. It's up. But if I go now, it's my report, so we can skip over it later, so it's up to you.
Well, it kind of dovetails with Jennifer's and we've changed the agenda around a little bit. I think just report on it and do your report.
Right. Okay, yeah, so we got, we got handed a pretty fast surprise a few weeks ago with the announcement that we would be going back full day on the fifth by the commissioner, and we've communicated with families, as you all know, you're, you always see the communication, and we have sent out a survey. And as of right now, there are only two students in our whole school who we have yet to have confirmation from. And as of right now, we have only seven remote students, so we are overwhelmingly, our families are choosing the in-person model. In most classes, there's one, there's one classroom that will have two, some classrooms will have one student remote, and there's one classroom that will have no students remote. So, you know, it's very different from, I think you remember the other surveys, you know, our school in the union was always pretty high with people choosing remote, and that has shifted, and it shifted across the, the union, but it has shifted in our school. And so what's tricky about that is, is that, you know, we're still having to provide instruction to the one or two children that are remote while the teacher is teaching another classroom full of students. For example, our, our first grade and our sixth grade are our largest classrooms. Um, and there, there are gonna be times when the teacher has twenty-one students in front of them and one student on a computer, and they still have to manage both. So it is no easy feat. I know they're up to the task. We have some ideas. It's going to be a lot of live streaming where the student at home is going to be able to be just like a kid in the class and have the vision of a kid in the class. Our older kids might be a buddy student for a day and have a device where the student actually sees everything they're doing. And then during some specials times, which I'll talk about, they might have some more one-on-one interaction with their teachers, but we've been working on a lot of stuff. Lunches, I don't know if I've told this group this yet. So, you know, we have Gail, and Gail's pretty amazing, as we all know, and we might be the only school in the state to do this, but we are serving lunches in bento boxes to students because lunch will be outside every day unless it's lightning, thundering and lightning out. And then we have a plan for the gym, but the lunch, lunches are gonna be outside every day, and Gail thought it would be much easier to prepare her normal lunch and package them in reusable bento boxes to distribute to the kids outside than having to make, you know, sandwiches with that kids aren't even gonna really eat with prepackaged things. She's, she felt like it was much easier for her just to make her normal thing, put them in bento boxes, wheel them out there, wash the bento boxes and keep, and, and keep going, so. Because we intend to do that in the fall as well, as of right now, so it's a long-term thing. So that's what we're thinking about for lunch, again, possibly the only school in the state doing bento boxes. We did, we rented a large tent that's gonna go in the lower field for our classrooms to access outside. We're getting that outside Wi-Fi set up because almost every teacher has expressed lots of interest in spending the majority of their day outside. We're getting supplies to make outdoor classroom spaces. A lot of teachers are choosing crates or Home Depot buckets that act as both a carryout of materials for students, but also a seat. Or even a desk if you're sitting on the ground and leaning on a crate, so we're doing some of that. We're still keeping our, our separate exits and entrances as well as bathrooms. All of that is staying the same. Specials are gonna be coming back in person for the students, so as you know, we did have to mix up where classrooms are this year to be able to provide extra space for our bigger classrooms, particularly our first grade classroom. So we don't have an art and music room for them, but those teachers are gonna be on carts and going in the classroom if it's poor weather, but otherwise, they plan on being outside with the students. So the students will not be mixing paths still with any cohorts. They're still remaining as their own separate cohorts. We do have a higher amount of people choosing transportation. It's only, right, it's only thirty-eight students right now, which is lower than a normal year, but it's higher than the, you know, ten that we had during this time, so there will be a few kids on buses. There was one more thing before I get to the next part. Oh, um, one of our parries is coming back from leave starting on April fifth, and that's our sixth grade paraviva, and she and the sixth grade teacher are coming up with this kind of whole outside ed program. Vive has been going and observing in some places that have these programs, and so I'm pretty excited about the possibility of what they're creating together. It's really, really exciting, and it's a giant, it's an awesome class, but it's a big class, so. Anyway, we can break up the amounts of kids inside together would be really helpful. And this is a sad thing. Well, Andrea Darby is retiring this year, and she's been a student support teacher at the school for many years. And it's exciting for her that she's retiring, but it's sad for us, so we will be posting very soon for a student support teacher. And then another really sad thing, but we all knew it was coming, was that Jessica Carlson Belanger is finishing her degree to be a school counselor, and she's finishing this year, and so it's her hope to get a position as a school counselor, which means that our my right-hand person at the school and everybody's help is going to be leaving, and so that's a very big position that we're going to need to fill, and that's gonna also, you know, when she gets a position, which we, I think will happen for her. We will be posting that, so I'm asking people, I'll say it here, I'm spreading it wide. You, we gotta find a really great person in that position. It's vital to our school. Because not only do they, are they the, you know, the office administrator, but they also report on all of our state data. There's a, there's a lot of stuff in that position that is vital to the success of our school, so spreading it wide, and so that's all I have.
Well, thank you, and I'm sorry to see Jessica go, and.
Well, she hasn't submitted it yet, but I just am very I don't, I think she will find a job, but I'm just, we're spreading the word now to try to get people thinking about it.
All right, we'll keep us posted. Thank you. Any questions for Jackie, anyone? All right. Let's move on to new business and discussion items. I think first is the academic calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two academic calendar?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-one.
Okay, a second?
What'd I just say? Did I say the right dates?
You did.
I can second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Excellent. Looks like it passed unanimously. Next, identification of school choice seats. So tonight, we're just gonna be discussing them. Our next meeting, we vote on school choice. And Jackie, have you identified?
I still feel very confident in my previous statement on this. I'm, I'm happy to think about school choice for kindergarten through third grade only unless there's a sibling pair that includes an older grade student. And I'm also only interested in thinking about school choice in classrooms that have eighteen or under students. And that is something that I've discussed with the staff, I feel really strongly about, too. And I feel like next year, that might only be for us one grade, because I think we're gonna have a very large kindergarten class, at least from the, from the census. We're gonna have a very large kindergarten class. Oh, actually, two classes. We might have room in first grade and we might have room in third grade, but second and kindergarten, I think, are going to be full.
Okay. Okay, anyhow, and have any questions or anything? All right, so we'll vote on that at the next meeting, and the MOA, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we will go into executive session to discuss, and then when we come out to open public session, we'll vote. Okay, reports, we've already done the superintendent and principal report. Next is the Director of Finance and Operations.
I don't have a whole lot tonight, but just wanna report, they announced the rural aid numbers this year. Suits berries in line to get twenty-five thousand nineteen dollars and six cents, so not terrible. It's helpful. I don't know if we really need it this year, but we'll certainly be using it next year, so. And just an update, I've been trying to help gather information for some of the issues we have in the school building. Got a proposal for a complete upgrade of the heat system. Hundred and seventy thousand dollar plus, so it's been passed on to the Capitol Committee, and I don't know if there's anybody from the Capitol Committee kinda wanna talk about what happened last night, but put forward and just all we can do is to sit and wait and see what the town wants to do, so. And that's basically all I got going on, other than trying to help get ready for opening. Anyway, again.
So last night, there was a meeting with the Capitol Planning Committee, and Jackie and Stephen were both there. Steve, do you wanna talk a little bit about the meeting?
Yeah, so the discussion was based around the two totally different say, reports that we got, one from Jamrog and one from the Nexus Company, and they are miles apart, and so the members of the Buildings Committee that are on the Capitol Planning Committee have decided that they should come back into the building, stare at the boilers, look at them, touch them, let, let them, their, feel their auras, and then decide what we're gonna do. So I really think what needs to be done is like we did with the roof, the school committee needs to talk about what we'd like to see done, and then let the Buildings Committee know what we're thinking, and then let the Buildings Committee look at it, and then where it goes from there, I don't know, but what I was thinking is that I'd like to see those two boilers, we should call up the Amherst College Museum of Natural Sciences and have those suckers placed beside the triceratops bones that are in there and replace the suckers. Bruce, you laugh, but I mean, I started there in two thousand and eight, and one of my jobs was to mop up before after school, the puddles that were on the floor, and that was two thousand and eight, and here we are in two thousand twenty-one.
I'm not laughing. I tend to agree with your assessment, Steve, so.
But Steve, I would say what's interesting in both of these proposals, neither of them are recommending replacing the boilers.
No, I, I understand that, that, yes, that's true. They're replacing the controls, but I haven't gone through the Nexus one yet. I will with, with Bob.
Right, it's, it's all the controls.
So I, go ahead. Just, just so everybody's aware, the MSBA is behind this year, so if and when they ever come out with a the request for proposals there, or requests to get us, allow people in or districts in, I will certainly be applying for both the roof and the boilers. Again, maybe we can get some help from the state, so. Just wanted to make people aware of that, so.
Okay, Suzie, just a moment. So you, you're gonna, for the roof and the boilers?
Yeah. Yeah, the roof and the heat system, same as we did last year and the year before.
Well, the heat system and the boiler, so the heating system comprises a lot of different components, and I know we keep talking about the boilers, but the boilers don't seem to be the issue. But we keep talking about replacing the boilers.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we wanna?
That was my bad. It should be the delivery system, not the boilers themselves, but everything else.
Right, but even in the past, there was a, there was a warrant article to replace the boilers, but the boil, but that didn't go through, so again, I think it's important that we're clear because the heating system comprises lots of different components, and even last night at the meeting, I kept using the word comprehensive. There were some people that talked about replacing everything. Well, we can't replace everything because everything in the heating system is a lot, so. So I think I, I'm using the word comprehensive because I think we're saying that we as a school committee, and I believe administration all really want the heating system working efficiently, effectively, reliably, and most cost effectively. And that will require a comprehensive look. The two estimates, I guess we should call them, or proposals are very different. So I'm hoping that last night's meeting brought, or will bring us back on track. That will include the buildings committee, because I do think that it's important for people to be, you know, you, you know, they're, they're volunteering their time, their expertise to help in, you know, navigating through, I think, what could be a very complicated system. And hopefully we're all on the same page, but I think it's important that, you know, we, you know, the two proposals, they're apples and oranges. So we need to have a system where we can come up with finding out what we need to do to fix the problem. And then really put it out to a bid, the bid process that, that Becky had talked about. But I will say from the meeting last night, and I'm sorry, Suzie, that we haven't gotten to you. But I think the meeting last night, you know, the town recognizes that we have sort of three big problems at the school. The roof, the heating system, and the glass doors. And I think they're willing to fix them and repair them, replace them, or whatever. We just need to make sure that we do everything in a legal way with the bidding process because they're over a certain amount of money. But also I think it's important to, you know, really come up with with a thorough examination to find out what we need. And then, then we can look at the competitive process for bids. Okay, I'm sorry to keep you so long, Suzie.
That's okay. So did you meet with the building committee or capital planning or both?
They were both there.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I did, I did forget to say them. Jackie, would you add anything to that?
No, I just, I am grateful that the town is willing to help. And I just reiterated last night that no matter what the process is and what people feel like is the best way to go, I just didn't want to miss out on getting something on a, on, in town meeting that it's going to be able to support us. So that I just reiterated that last night. I didn't want it to wait another winter, especially when I know that it's going to be working overtime again because of the amount of times we have our air circulating and because people have windows and doors open. I mean, that is most likely going to continue at least through the fall until, you know, students are vaccinated too, or when, whatever happens. So I, I just reiterated that.
Yeah. And I think it was important that you did, and I think it was very effective, and I think that they were responsive. I would also like to mention to the rest of the committee, I think how much of a value Matt has been to really monitor systems, keep people abreast of things. You know, he has a lot on his plate. He has a complex job. And he needs to be aware of a lot of things. And, you know, I think he, he's responsible and dependable. And I, I believe he knows sort of what to look for and to be aware of. Nobody has to tell him, oh, go check this or go look for that. So I really want to just recognize him here tonight in front of the committee that I, I did mention it last night as well, but I do appreciate all of his work. So.
And I appreciate him coming last night.
That was very nice of him. Yeah. All right. So at least Bruce, you know, just to make sure, we're, we're trying to keep all those lines of communication open and clear between everyone. Okay? So it's, it's all good. We hope. All right. Next Amherst Palom representative report.
This will be super brief. The first one is I did vote, I think I sent everyone the little note, but I voted yes to flipping the start times between the middle school and high school and the Amherst Elementary. So it's going to affect the shootsberry start time. And I'm not sure if it affects Leverett or not, but they have it, but how much time in the, what the start time will be for the high, middle school and high school hasn't been decided yet. It will be very soon though. And the second thing is the middle school, as Jackie mentioned, the middle schoolers go back on April twenty sixth, and the staff is working really hard to establish the teams and all of the things that go into being a awkward middle schooler. Because we do not want them to miss out on that time. And the other thing was that the, on, on March ninth, the shootsberry select board, finance committee and school committee all agreed that shootsberry, or at least the shootsberry rep to the regional school committee will vote for the sixty five percent statutory with the five year rolling average when we vote on the budget next week. And where it goes from there, I don't know, but I will be sticking with the, as the appointed rep, I will be sticking with the sixty five percent statutory.
For the five year rolling average.
With the five, yes, with the five year rolling average.
Great. That's it. Any questions for Steven on anything?
No, but Leverett will be affected too with the start time, Leverett Elementary.
Manageable Jackie, at least for us?
Um, we're, yes, it's going to be a shift. It's going to be a shift, but it's manageable. I think, I do think something coming out of it, though, that's going to be tricky is that it is my understanding that for them to be able to bus our students to the school and then circle back around the lake, which is their big issue, is like the long loop around the lake. That the, the bus stops are going to be shifting for people, and I do feel like families are going to feel not so happy because it's not going to be at, at necessarily at the door, at the front doors anymore. I think they're going to be making kids walk. And I don't think that, that families in shootsberry are necessarily used to that.
Yes, Steven.
Well, that, that's not quite true because the bus thirty that runs around the lake, students have had to walk because the bus never does the hill by my house. And the same thing with Leonard. I mean, actually, the elementary school has had.
A little, that little spot near your house. Yeah, they do have to walk. You're right. Like Jessica, from like Jessica's house, but it does go around pretty far, at least in the elementary school.
It does, but the kids that live down on the lake roads, they don't, they also have to come out to the street. The bus doesn't go down the private lake roads. It may go down Shore Drive, but it doesn't go down any other one. So there, so we really are set up for that, but I think I'd like to talk with Doug Slaughter and see if we can't get because now it's one bus company that we can't get different driver, because it doesn't matter who the driver is. It, because as long as the elementary have the same driver back and forth, that it doesn't matter who drives what. And I'm going to see if they can't just switch routes around to help shootsberry with its start times.
Yeah, I mean, right now we're looking at eight oh five. That's significantly, that's significantly earlier.
I'll talk with Doug and see if we really can't get that. So it's as little, you know, unless we're going to start a before school program, I'll come in, I'll start working for the highway department late and do a before school program.
Well, it's not the before school that's going to be the issue. I mean, you're, you're welcome to do that.
I'll do the.
Before school, that's, that's the issue. It's going to be that we end at two fifty five every day. And that's going to mean a lot more. People are going to have a hard time being home for their kids. So that, I mean, and I was, we were very clear with Mike Morris about that. He did bring us into that conversation. We, we spoke with him. So, you know, that's just, that's the big thing.
Yeah. And maybe he can work with the bus company and they can be creative to see if they can do it in some other way.
Yeah, that was the only reason I voted yes, because with a single bus company.
Oh, you're muted.
I do believe we can make it work because they can shift buses around, unlike because Meskisian five star working together but apart.
To keep us posted on that Jackie, how it impacts our start time. Okay?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you. Union twenty eight. I don't think we have anything yet, do we? Okay.
No, I don't think we have much to share.
Okay. And the collaborative, we haven't had our board meeting, but I will say we are in process of searching for a new executive director. We've had a screening committee narrow down the candidates to twelve. I'm on the interview committee to interview these twelve candidates to move forward, however many we feel need to be the finalists that go before the board. And then the board will ultimately interview the finalists and make the decision as to who will be the next, next executive director. So a lot going on there.
That's a, that's a lot of interviews, Dan. That's a lot.
It is. All right. So policy review. We're going to have our first reading on EBC emergency plans. Does anyone have that in front of them? I, I did find an error, but Trevor, do you have them like in front of you? I think I can pull it up, but.
I can pull it up, but I can't. I'm having issues showing mine and that at the same time, at the moment.
Okay.
Would you like me to pull them up and present them? I can do that.
Well, um, this is just a first reading, but I did find a, I think an error on two of them. So I just wanted to make those corrections.
Okay, I have it up now, Dan.
Okay, so under the first one, which is emergency plans. Okay. In the first sentence, I think it says advanced planning. I think there should be a D at the end of that.
Yeah, it says advanced planning for emergencies.
Right. Should be a D right behind that, advanced. Well, we can.
I would say not.
No? Okay. I'm not an English teacher.
I can tell you that, that most of the policies that are coming forward, we switched back to the M A S C versions. So they weren't, they were written by the state and whatever.
Okay.
Group does that.
All right. And then the other one was the facilities development goals. Okay, and I have this one up here, but the school committee believes that educational program is influenced greatly by, and I think it should say, believes that educational program, oh, okay, that, all right. The school committee believes that an educational program is influenced greatly. So I think we need to add an and in there. So maybe you can make those as suggestions and someone who is really good with that kind of stuff can read it through and if it should be amended, amended, if I'm wrong, check it. Okay? Does anyone else or see anything in any of those first readings? EBC, EDCB, EEC, or FA? Okay. So those are just readings. We'll move on to the second reading and first vote on the following policies. Okay? So we'll need someone to motion and second. So if you guys, whoever wants to do that can unmute. And we need a first vote on DA fiscal management goals. Lauren, are you going to approve? Make, make a motion?
I just don't have the list of them in front of me, but I can make.
Okay, so if you want to make a motion to approve DA fiscal management goals.
Okay, so I, I moved to approve.
Don't move. Okay.
Second.
All right. Any amendments or changes? All in favor? All right. Lauren, do you want to make a first vote on DJ purchasing?
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or changes? All in favor? Aye. Also, first vote on DJA purchasing authority.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any amendments or changes? All in favor? Aye. Okay, the final vote on the following policies. The next policy is BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any amendments or changes? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Next policy, final vote, IHBEA, English learner education.
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or changes? All in favor? Aye. Policy final vote on JB, equal educational opportunities.
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or changes? All in favor? Aye, yes. Final vote on policy JBB, educational equity.
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or changes? All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. And the last policy we'll vote on for the final vote is CHCA approval of the handbook and directives.
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or changes? All in favor? Aye, okay, passes unanimously. So future business, we have shootsberry school, policy committee, school committee meeting, union twenty eight coming up, budget and personnel, nothing. Hope everyone knows if there's any future agenda items that you would like on the agenda, please feel free to email me, Jennifer, Pam, any of us will make sure it gets on the agenda. Anything else that anyone wants to bring up? Yes, Lauren?
I just wanted to say, Dan, you, you made the point of appreciating Matt. And I think it's really important. We've said a lot about our appreciation of the work that the teachers are doing. But I think Matt and, and Gail also really deserve to be made note of all, all the great work that they're doing and what a difference it makes. So I just wanted to to add that before we finish up.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I, I second that as well. Yeah. All right. So if there is nothing else, what we can do, Trevor, is we are going to go into executive session. We are going to come back into open public session. But if you want to leave, we can have someone forward you if we take a vote and what that vote is. But good. All right. And Bruce, are you going to be hosting that next meeting? Or you're muted?
I have control of that meeting, if you want me to.
I also need, if you want me there, I need an invitation.
Okay. So we'll invite you in the motion.
And I actually needed the literal, the actual.
I'll send you an invitation, Jackie.
Okay. And on that invitation, I think we, I think I can get on. I'm pretty sure I know how to do that.
So this is the Google meet, correct? When I went into that accidentally before, the old meeting is still there. So there's two listed.
Yep.
And it's gonna, I just feel like we're going to get a little mixed up getting in the correct one.
Okay. So it would be the last one? Is that how it works?
You're probably going to get a new one.
Okay. Just send us.
Just sending it now to add Jackie.
So we have to accept it then, right?
To go through the email, not through the.
Yeah, I think you should be getting a new email. Maybe not.
All right, so.
So what you do is just keep, stay on this one until you get into the other one.
Okay. I don't know how to do that.
No, I'm gonna go in first to see if anyone's. Oh, it says that someone has to let me in, so that's.
Yeah, so I have to let it to end, so give me a second.
Okay, yeah, that's something.
Okay, we should be good.
All right, so. All right, a roll call, we're on motion to go into executive session. Discuss strategy with respect to collect the bargaining or litigation, coming back into open public session. Hey, Zai?
Fine, Andrew, hi.
I don't speak my own language.
Tell them, I.
All right, we'll see you soon. And we'll, Trevor, one of us will send something to you. Thanks. Okay.
I think you and I are in.
I, Bruce, can can you tell me, could you think you could send it to me again?
Okay, Dan's in. Can you get the old one, Lauren, or no?
I can't seem to find it, that's why.
Okay, I thought the new one would send to you, so.
Thank you.
Okay, give me a second.
I got it, Bruce, thanks.
Oh, okay, well.
Thank you.
I sent it again, so.
Okay, awesome.
So I got a lot of stuff going on here.
Okay, do we have everybody yet?
Lauren should be on her way.
Didn't we vote on that MOA?
This is a different MOA, and I'm gonna talk about it.
Okay.
We'll wait till we have Lauren in here as well.
There's Lauren. There you go.
So I know there was some confusion with the agenda item because it talked about an MOA, and yes, we did vote on a memorandum of agreement with the teachers' union. But there was a little bit of an issue related to one of our employees, Martina Dooley, and it's in regards to her having a bachelor's degree. The way the contract works is there is additional money that people get if they have an additional degree. Evidently, it was not communicated or wasn't recorded or noted, and therefore, going back to August of 2015, she was not getting that additional money. So the union worked with administration and negotiated sort of a agreement. We would share tonight. Basically, like administration and the union have agreed to is going back three years. So I don't know the exact amount of money. It's not a lot. Jackie, do you know?
It's 250 a year, so if it's, you know.
So it's.
Yeah, it's pr- it's prated to her hours of work, Dan. Because he's only a part-time employee, so.
Right.
I don't think, I think it'll be less than $500, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not gonna be a lot of money.
Right, so I think the idea was we weren't going to go all the way back, because at some point, you know, it should have been recognized that, you know, it wasn't being given, but at the same time to, you know, respect an employee who is working at the school, and it wasn't oversight and everybody's part. You know, went back three years, prorating it based upon the number of hours. That seemed to be copacetic with everybody, so how does the committee feel about that? We can discuss it here, and then we come to open the public session, we'll vote on it. Okay. Everyone good with that? Okay, so when we come back into open public session, we'll just vote to support the memorandum of agreement between the elementary school educators. I do have it here, it's already been signed by the elementary educators. I would sign it tomorrow and then back to Pam. Okay? So, we'll come back to an open public session. Oh, that's my name. I mean, so I'm gonna have to get a second public session later. Oh, God. All right. Lauren.
I'll back to Zooming again.
Oh, my God, and that's not easy either. So, next, we want to talk about the teachers' contracts. And I believe Katie and Jen would need some order guidance and parameters, is that right?
Yeah, we met with Bruce and Adam yesterday and have a council of teachers proposal ready to go pretty much for Monday. A lot of the things we've either already talked about or were really simple. What? The big things. We left alone the out-of-town students, understanding that we do have some risk there, but it seemed like this committee wanted to keep it anyhow. So, we've agreed to quite a, there are several things the teachers are asking for that are really not a big deal. They're just things that probably should have been listed in the contract more clearly and aren't, or language that needs to change around something that happened with the unions and has to change in all contracts that I didn't really fully understand, but it wasn't interesting enough to learn more about. So, basically, the money is gonna be the, oh, we're counting the the sick days for family member that we'd asked for 10 days, the teachers came back and said, no, we're putting 20 days in this time. It's basically just putting any kind of a number on it is what Adam is really suggesting, or it could be like somebody could take all of their time and the school could be in a lot of trouble for it. So, you were saying even if it ends up at 30 days, it would be better than not having any limit on there?
Can you explain, I just, because I am the one who has to like enforce that, I just want to know in my brain, so they're allowed to take 20 sick days?
For care of somebody else. On that, so we're coming back with 20.
Okay.
Adam says we really need to have a limit on it, or the budget-wise, we could get in a lot of trouble in the future if there was.
Can it be like a cousin, or does it have to be like an immediate?
Whatever the sick day policy now would allow, so I think that's like immediate family, right? It's just, it's all a change, the policy is putting a cap on that piece. His advice was strongly that anybody that has a really extreme situation would go to the union and come to you, and we would make an exception for that, but it would, it can't be just totally open-ended. So.
Yeah, I like having a number, it's very helpful.
Well, I don't think it looks up to 20, it might go up again, but.
So there is the option for the ability to go to the to to address it if there was an extreme need, there's like some way for them to do that, okay?
Yeah, they start with the union and the union goes to either administration or school committee, I don't know how that process is outlined, but he said that happens with some regularity and it's not, it's not a hard rule.
And they use, they use their existing sick time.
But some people have a lot of expensive sick time.
There's some people with like over a year's worth.
So, the money, I want to get this, money for the teachers, we're countering, and they they wanted 333 and more steps. That's not going to happen, but we are are putting out there 1% in the first year, a new step in the second year, but no cola, and one in the third year.
Okay, so for teachers alone.
That's teachers only.
So next year, I'll just write this down. So.
1%, one step, 1%.
Steps would occur the first year and the third year. And even the second. We're not adding steps, but steps, steps happen.
The steps do accumulate, but they're not being reimbursed for those steps except in that second year, is that true?
No, they're just the same as they always have, but people that have stepped out that are already on their top step, we're adding a step in that second year.
Right, so so if you're, if you're at step 12, that means in year one, you're gonna get a 1% cola. Year two, you'll get a one-step increase, which is a 3% basically.
Yep.
And it's broke zero cola? Zero cola in the second year?
Correct.
Okay. And year three is?
1%. And this is just what, this is just our counter proposal at this point, so this won't be what will stay.
Okay.
But they asked for a step in the second year. Correct, Katie?
They did, that was their request, and they wanted 3% every year and a step in the second year, so we gave them a step in the second year.
I'm okay with that. 1% in the first year, year two, one step increase with a zero colon, year three, 1%.
That's what we're proposing.
How do other members feel about that, specifically with teachers?
I think it sounds good, I mean, it sounds like that's probably not where we're gonna land, but it's a, I think that's a good start.
Although some other districts are settling that low this year.
Yeah, the Amherst teachers, they are, they were, they're only doing another one year because they know that there's no money, and if we're trying to give them nothing but a, but their steps this year, and then we'll negotiate again starting next year.
And we talked about that. You're done, but if that, you know, it might not be possible this year.
Do we know how many teachers are at that step 12?
A significant portion. Significant portion, it's a very, it's a very veteran staff.
Okay, so are we good with the teachers part of it? That's the proposal. Okay.
For Paris, our Paris comps are actually higher than almost any other district that we could find already. So we were proposing for them 1% all three years, and no step increased.
Yeah, because Jackie, you, when we bumped the subs up, we bumped the Paris up, that's, we we tried to bump everybody up, right?
No, like, I get it, just the humanitarian part of me is like, it's really embarrassing to offer people like $14 an hour to like bust their butt chasing down children and changing diapers and, you know, but I, but I get it, like, I get it. It's just hard for me to believe that we pay more than people for Paris.
By quite a bit.
In the, the way that we treat Paris is so, because when I went through UWW, my cohort had 26 Paris in it plus me, and the the bulk, I want to say 20 of them were Paris in schools where if they got to monitor lunch one day, it was a super thing because they were doing coffees, they were doing, you know, just recess, they they weren't able to participate in classrooms at all, so the, I mean, our Paris are literally co-teachers.
For sure, for sure. The other thing with the Paris that we need to do is deleting the bottom steps one and two. Because they're gonna, it's just not a reasonable pick.
Right.
So.
Is that still like the $12.32?
I don't remember where it was, but it's it's like right up against minimum wage, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it's not.
It's like 1320 or something like that, if I can remember correctly.
Oh, so it's going up?
So, other things that they have asked for that we seemed okay with, I think we talked about a little bit in the last meeting. I'm sorry, they wanted an extra stipend for advanced certifications. The only one that they could give us for an example was an ABA certification. We didn't want to leave it like unlisted for any kind of a certification, because if it's not really helpful, then, so we, they asked for 250 for an autism certification, we were gonna offer 100 because they didn't feel like it's really should be at the same level as the bachelor stipends.
I I agree with that statement, but I also wouldn't be opposed to get paying someone decent money for that, because it's it's really needed, so you know, I.
I think people often get a stipend for that too, for the ABA certification, like I've seen that several places.
And that's one that I think we'd be kind of fine with changing after too, like we wanted some that we were okay with sort of giving. We did, we were okay with making the bachelor stipend for all positions, there was a little bit of back and forth on that. Jen and I both felt like it is relevant to Gail's position, you know, like that was some of the question, like, do you really want to have that for any position? We think, yes, we do. So, and that, I I believe is kind of a glitch that in the past one, like the fact that the assistant in the office has it and the other person doesn't, I don't think that was ever intentional in any way, there was some oversight that was done, so just clearing that out makes sense. The custodial, we need to take Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but I'm I'm pretty sure we need to remove the bottom three steps to at least the assistance contract.
Yes.
Distance is also laughable in my opinion, but I have no idea what other places pay, but it's appalling a little bit to me.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So we wanted to add steps to those, both of those positions as well. I I think everybody's sort of clear that those jobs responsibilities have changed considerably. And so adding steps there, I want to make sure I didn't miss anything here. There was something in the contract that maybe it makes sense to anybody why that teachers weren't getting mileage reimbursement until after the first 100 miles. The way it was written, which just seems ridiculous, so we were okay with if you drive miles, you can.
Well, it depends on what we're talking about, because I mean, this is your decision, obviously, I'll just tell you from my opinion, like, back in normal times. I mean, this is your decision, obviously, I'll just tell you from my opinion, like, back in normal times, when we would go to different schools on Wednesdays for PD, teachers wanted to be reimbursed for that driving, which I didn't feel comfortable with, because that's like a professional responsibility. You might feel differently, but it's different if they're going to a conference, right, and they're driving a significant mile of time, if I'm approving a conference, then I would help pay for their transportation. So I don't know what they mean by that, because most people wouldn't put in for hours for union-wide PD, but there were some people who would keep track of all of the miles that they drove if they did and submit them.
I think if they submitted, I think you have to, at least the distance from their typical school to the school they're being asked to go to, not from home.
Yeah, I
I guess that's your decision.
Yeah. Just to reinforce what Jackie does, to the best of my knowledge, we do not pay any other mileage for any other school for internal professional development travel. And most of the time, we do it whole days anyway, so it's you know, it's their place of work basically for that day, so.
Right, it does say required mileage in there, the wording is all the same as what was, the only thing we were taking out was the part that's after the first one hundred miles.
Well, because that one hundred miles would include all the travel for the year.
Oh, I see.
That's why it's in there, so I mean, you could probably lower it, I don't think we asked them to drive a hundred miles from our school to another school, you could lower that like to the first fifty even miles. Um, cuz we only ask them to do that when it's not coming to school for the day, cuz we have like the two full days that we do as a union. And then we do like maybe four-ish half-days. So I don't think it would ever be, I don't think from our school to any other union school is more, would, would rack up more than fifty miles in a year.
Okay.
Do we wanna make that proposal then?
Yeah, I'll bring that, I'll bring that back to Jen too, like that piece of it.
Okay.
Um.
Or we could do something like for in, in Union Twenty-Eight Professional Development Travel or something like that. It's not reimbursable, but anything beyond that, we reimburse it though.
Talk to Adam, see if he has language though.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh make sure that I got these right, the summer work part, those rates were correct, it's just they weren't in the contract, so that was fine. Um, the only make sure I'm miss, not missing anything, that one's a little more complicated. That right, what do we say no to there?
Will you look at number seventeen, Katie?
Uh, I just wanted to make sure that I had everything, oh, the off-site work increasing stipend, we said no because there already is a ten dollar stipend, they wanted to up it to twenty, nobody can give us some really clear information on who even uses that, but
In my seven years, in my seven years here, we used it one time for three weeks.
Adam wanted it out because if you did have a child that needed to be tutored in their home, you would be paying twenty dollars on top of every single time anybody needed to go to their house and it could sorry, it could become very, very expensive. Um, so
That would be removed. We're, we're, we're suggesting to
Oh, we're just not raising it, we didn't bring it up to remove, they wanted it increased.
Okay, no increase.
Um, then there's the complicated one, excuse me one moment. When Paris are teaching, seems pretty black and white, but it's not in the contract yet. Uh, we were, if we were fine with that, the rates, I think it was twenty-five for a half-day and forty for a full day, that seems to be what it is, but they wanted that added to, I suppose it, to um anybody else that's doing a different job. And that their examples were um
You mean the I, you mean, do I get that, when, when I'm the chef and the nurse and everything?
They didn't name you specifically, they did name when Jessica is the nurse as an example of that, they named when Andy is doing Matt's job or when Gail is out and um the assistant, I'm not sure who that is right now, is cooking. Um, it, looking into what different districts are doing, adding that full price onto there would, didn't seem to make a lot of sense for a lot of those examples. Um, Bruce, you had some
Yeah.
information to pay what other schools were doing.
So what we currently do is Meg says we take the difference between um say the assistant custodian makes and what the first step on the um senior custodian, head custodian is and we pay the difference between the rates. So there is now in the same food service director, so, you know, I think I think memorializing that somehow, maybe even if we go to step two instead of step one or something like that, that but that's what we do in other schools. Or that's, that's what Meg does basically across the board, I don't think it's in any other contracts, but that's what she currently does, so.
So our, our counter proposal on that is to put that language into this contract, so there is an increase, but it's not as high as the parent to teacher.
No, it's not
change would be.
Unless, it's not ten dollars an hour, which is basically what the the teacher, parent to teacher is, which, you know, is probably fair, so.
That's definitely fair, yeah.
Um, the, we said no to notifying Paris of their placements, we're, we just said no, like, didn't even really address that one. Uh, we'll see what they come back with, but it's not. And then we are coming in with a no on longevity increases. But um Adam thinks money-wise, that's the smallest piece, if we need to give something over, that's the one that would cost us the less, the least. So it's not necessarily gonna stay a no, but we're initially coming in with a no.
That may be our give-to-get, that was something.
Yep. Uh, we did say okay to increase the teacher in charge from a thousand to twelve hundred. Some of the like smaller things like that, it felt like it was important to have quite a few guesses on this, see, when it does go back to them instead of like, there's a lot of big no's. So trying to be somewhat reasonable of that, and I think I mean, that's most of it. The summer work rate, I said, adding that in.
That'll be illustrated basically.
Oh, there's also um what like looks like an error as far as we can tell in the previous contract, that talks about the teachers being part of the parents evaluation, but it said in there twice a year instead of once a year.
Yeah, and I'm surprised they want that in there, cuz none of them want anything to do with the valuation.
They were fine with leaving it, they just wanted the twice a year out to just say once a year, which I think is
They're not evaluated twice a year, they are evaluated once a year and it's just interesting, cuz when I go to the teachers and I say, would you like to be a part of this evaluation with me, they say no.
So are you, Katie, cuz I, I just wanna come back to things.
Uh, I believe that's it on this sheet, yes.
Okay, so I'm very clear on uh, and this is more about the financial piece of it, I'm clear on the teachers part of it. The parent educators, um, just in reference, the step one is fourteen dollars, but we're eliminating steps one and two?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, otherwise, nothing changes really there, correct?
And, and adding a one percent every year.
Correct, thank you. And now, the um head administrative assistant and custodian, were those kind of lumped together or no?
Nope, the, the custodian and assistant custodian are together.
Okay, so the custodian and the assistant custodian. Um and what, were we doing adding steps to the custodian?
Correct, removing the bottom steps and adding steps.
Okay, how many steps?
Uh, in this note, I don't really have it clearly, was it two or three, Bruce?
Three, Katie. I thi- I think it's
So removing three, adding three.
Yeah, with the, with the assistant custodian and the head custodian, just adding three, I believe.
Okay, so the, the head custodian, you're keeping all of the steps adding three?
Yeah, because currently he only, currently the office aide and the custodian only have six steps.
Correct.
Yeah, so that'll bring them up to nine.
Are you talking about, are you talking about the office aide Martina or the office aide Jessica?
Uh, office aide. Uh
I don't have any notes about the office at all.
Oh, cuz office aide, uh Jessica and office aide, or administrative assistant, head administrative assistant only has six steps.
Yeah, the head should be significantly higher, the head should be they have way more responsibility.
So they didn't ask for anything for that position, those positions.
I
So they didn't ask for, for the head custodian?
No, the custodians they did, not the office.
So let's, let's stay with the custodian first, we're adding three steps.
Yes.
To the head, yeah.
They'll get a step, and a, and a
Just a step, we're not adding colas to those, we're not offering colas right now to those, just the steps every year, or they mean, just adding the three steps.
Okay, and no cola in each of the years?
We're not, we, we were gonna offer the three steps, that's it for those.
Okay.
Because that's, the steps more than a cola would be, that's the goal, isn't it, we're looking at?
About three percent.
Yeah, three percent steps.
And I think Jackie, to your point, and, and Matt, I know I sent this all over the email, but um, that, he's at the top, and so this will give him a three percent rate. Okay, and you're good with that, right?
I, I would love, I mean, whether it's him or anybody, I would want someone to try to stay for a while, cuz just like with a head office person, it's hard to train people like that.
So those three steps will be at least, you know, for the next three years, so that's a good thing. All right, so that's the head custodian, and the assistant custodian, you said you were gonna eliminate the bottom three steps?
Yep.
Yep, and add three to the top.
Yeah. Cuz the bottom three aren't even fourteen dollars an hour, so.
Yeah, and no additional steps?
No, we're adding three.
Adding three to the assistant custodian?
That is, that, that scale now is a ten-step scale.
Okay.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's towards the top of it as well, I believe.
That's the bummer of working for a small town, cuz the highway department is the same way where unless you, once you hit the top step, unless you jump up to highway supervisor, you're stuck just accepting whatever the cola is and there are, there are no steps after number six. And yeah, so when I saw Matt's email, I felt his pain.
Okay, and uh food service director, we were adding three steps?
No.
Okay.
They, well, they didn't make any proposals for any other positions beyond teachers, Paris, and
I feel that is so strange to me.
So
I, I, it feels like it, I don't know.
I would just say that right now, the head custodian and the food service director have the same number of steps. They have the same exact pay scale, nineteen fifty-three is step one, ending at twenty-two sixty-three. Custodian does have an additional, I think, stipend for water license or something.
Mm hmm.
But have that in our back pocket of perhaps adding three steps to the food service director too?
I don't, I would, yes, I would say yes.
So what we're, what, if, if the committee agrees with that, I'm just telling you, Kat, Katie, that you could caucus and you could have that as a, a offer. Cuz to me, that would make sense and keep it all on par.
Yeah, cuz she's in the same boat as the custodians, I mean, once you hit the top, what's the point of staying?
And, and actually, the head administrative assistant has the identical scale also.
Yeah.
So, so
I feel like the veteran teachers were looking out for the veteran teachers and all these other people that are not making as much or being forgotten about, it's kind of sad.
The only reason custodians are on here is because Matt joined the negotiation team this year, so he's going to our meetings. But I know when we did this three years ago, we did across-the-board colas for all staff. But they're the ones that asked for it being split out differently by position this time, maybe they were not realizing what they did with leaving people out. Because we, we did the, the like two, two and a half, two last time, and that was for everybody in any position. But they didn't, last time, three years ago, they did this as well, I think you're with me, that was that whole splitting out Jessica and Martina's positions. It was very awkward because I didn't feel comfortable in my position, being the one to bring that problem up, because they never brought it.
I remember that, because, yeah, because as, you know, because it becomes about a person, not a position, and we, you know, know Jess, we didn't and they didn't bring it up, so it was very, it was very odd and uncomfortable.
Yeah, I'll bring it up because she's been more neutral than that.
I don't think Jessica, because she's going to be in a, most likely a different position, I don't know if she was investing, I think she found it exhausting to try to like talk about what that position needs.
Okay.
Well, but I, but I
circle around and give Katie the latitude from the committee um to make that as an offer in her back pocket, if they wanna caucus, uh but I think, as Bruce pointed out, we have the head custodian, food service director, head administrative assistant all with the exact same steps, exact same salaries, so we're gonna do one for the head custodian, one for the head administrative assistant, and one for the food service director, one meaning three, adding three steps and eliminating the bottom three.
They all have the same scales.
Then they all have the same scales with the same salaries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems fair.
That seems way fair.
Well, I have a question, then, if you're changing the heads in those three positions, what about the assistants in those three, we're, we're raising Andy, are we then also looking to raise the assistants in the kitchen and the office?
Well, I'll speak, I can speak for Rob, cuz I worked with him enough that he'll tell you that with his retirement, you'll have someone should talk to him and ask him, because he's, he can only earn a set amount and he's super careful about not going over whatever his amount, a lot of amount of earnings is, so someone should talk to him before you just increase his steps.
Wouldn't have thought of that.
Okay, so
But that's, that's another one, the, the bottom two or even, excuse me, three steps are uh twelve eighty-seven, thirteen twenty-six, and thirteen sixty-four. You know, we should, we should
Eliminate those three steps.
We should eliminate steps and add steps, cuz the top step is, uh, you know, sixteen seventeen, sixteen seventy-nine, which is
So Jackie?
I hear what Steve's saying, that we don't wanna get him into trouble with other benefits that he, he has by
Right, so Jackie, is that a conversation that you could have with him?
I could, but I'm really trying to not, a principal usually is not involved in negotiations, and that's on purpose, cuz I live in the house.
Right.
And so that is really tricky, so I, I can certainly try, but I'd rather not.
Okay.
Would
Okay, Steve?
Would you like?
Yeah, um, I would suggest since, if someone could talk to Matt, since he's on their negotiating team, Matt's a really good friend, and they talk, all Matt and Rob talk all the time, especially cuz Matt's helping with the, the lunch type stuff, that Matt could feel, definitely feel him out and find out what Rob is, what Rob would be thinking.
To go back to the position instead of the person though, that I think if Rob doesn't want it, then we just have to make note that we need to do that later, because the position still requires Because the position still requires, you know, that we, I feel like that we add the steps later on, we don't do it now.
Right, and like who knows how long he wants to do it for?
And, and he can certainly refuse the step, he can, you know, he can.
Can you refuse a step?
Say, I want to get paid what, what I want to get paid, and like, like. Steve says if he's affected, has other things that affect his income, that's, that's fine, we can do whatever we want.
So that would.
Do you want to make it the same as Andy?
That proposal would be eliminate the bottom three steps and add three more steps, is that right?
Yep, so it's what we are, what we already kind of figured out with Andy's, just to make that for those three positions, that was Martina as well. So they're all the same scale.
So then I, I think let's talk.
I mean, the, the job requirements on those do differ greatly, like Andy definitely has more. On his plate than the other two, but if you're gonna, if it's gonna be fair, I guess, yes.
Yeah.
Well, they're all, they are, those last two are a little bit different, so, uh, as far as the cafeteria assistant and the office aide. So I kind of feel like we do have a little bit of flexibility there, if we want to massage them to be what we want them to be. So I think.
Because the, because the office aide scales significantly different. Than the assistant custodian and the, and the food service assistant.
So. You should leave that one out of it?
So I'll give you the numbers that you would like, so if you're the cafeteria assistant, at the top of your scale, you're making $16.79. If you're the office aide, and six is the scale, uh, at the top of your pay, you're at 1995. So I think.
And what's the assistant custodian at?
Assistant custodian.
Top end is 1768, that's what I.
Yeah, no, he should be big in the 19.
So we're gonna add the three steps there.
Okay.
So the assistant custodian, right?
Yeah.
Custodian. The head administrative assistant. Food service director, the cafeteria assistant. So I guess Jackie, this is where we're gonna now talk about the office aide, so they're, again, they're a little bit different, they're not the same, so we can.
I just, I feel like the 20 bucks an hour for an office aide is appropriate. I mean, it's still not good, but it's appropriate. This, the like $17 for a custodian that has the same responsibilities of Matt, just at a later time. I mean, not to the major extent, but in terms of. What has to be done, and then also deals with all of the night events of the school.
Right.
So another option that I guess is closer to what we did last time, was anybody that's not accounted for. Like, if there's any other jobs that we're not thinking of, they took, and the office assistant could do this, the para increase.
I think, I feel like the office assistant should be paid as a para.
So they would, that would be the 1%, 1%, 1% for that position?
Because they are the parents.
It's great to just say you get nothing, because they didn't ask for anything for you, that seems really. And, and are there other jobs in the school that we haven't?
No, those are really it.
I think that, we covered everybody here.
I'd like that idea, Jack.
After school is, is a para? After.
No, after, negotiated with, after, after school is a negoti, it's just a negotiated price.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have to say that the price we're paying for the after school right now is way too much. It's always been the top of the para scale, and right now it's way out of whack. And that's why we're not making, we're losing lots of money on that one.
Well, it wasn't until I got Mr. Kara in, who was actually really good, and so I wanted a good, a teacher in there. Before I, but, but before I was paying a para scale, and I, I purposely paid him more so that I would have a very strong director. And in my opinion, he is.
And he, he broke even or did better last, last year, if we, we'd have done even better if we hadn't had COVID, so.
All right, so let's come back to. Uh, let's come back to, parents are gonna get a zero cola?
No.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
One.
All right, that's cheaper.
But yeah, this is all just our counter offer, so like, you know. These numbers aren't gonna stay. It won't be the three plus steps that they've requested, but. Um, it'll be somewhere closer to our end of this than theirs, because. Okay. I mean, I, I think even Stephanie knows that that's. Not reasonable to request.
Okay.
The only thing I can think of on the powers besides the special ed endorsements would be something if the preschool power picked up endorsements. That to me would seem to be the only other place that would make sense that they could earn something. Unless it's some outstanding thing that they get, but besides special, special ed, I really think that it would just be preschool endorsements.
I know, I, I, it didn't really get traction, but my suggestion on the, um, extra certifications was to add. ABA or. Other certi, other certification requested by administration, I guess that would be. But they were worried that that would put you into a bad situation with what you pick and what you don't pick, like, making those decisions. I didn't really mean you come in with this certification, ask for the money, I meant like, hey, we've got a child coming up that's gonna need this. Could you go out and get that? And I think it would make sense to give the money for it, but people could really claim anything the way that theirs is written right now.
Yeah.
And that. Could get pricey quickly?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know of anything else besides ABA that you want?
Um, no, maybe some like. Um. Really no, because if we needed something bigger than that, we'd have to contract out, like if I needed like a bigger behavior analysis.
So I just wanted to make one comment, and then we can try to wrap it up. So Katie, just so you know, um, the way I'm approaching this contract, I'm really looking at it as what I think is fair and equitable. Um, I understand it's the whole negotiating thing and all of that, but when I look at it and I see these inequities. And I do feel bad for some of the people that seem to be forgotten here. Um, so that is why I feel like I'm, I'm just looking at it from that perspective. So even though I know, yes, we're not gonna end up there, I think that's a reasonable, you know, sort of gesture or change. But just to be clear, uh, the office aide, we're not adding steps, so the recommendation, not adding steps, but they would have the same cola as the para, which is the 1%. For the first year, and then, uh, year two, 1%, and for year three, 1%. Right?
Yep.
Cafeteria assistant dropping, we'll ask the, the lowest three and adding three steps. Uh, they, they'll get closer to 20 bucks.
I mean, come on, that feels at least a little better.
So we are gonna meet with them. Uh, stop, at least twice. Possibly. Three times before we meet again as a school committee. So you guys are good with Jen and I making like reasonable jumps, these things, we don't need to get back together on that, right? We've done, we've talked to Bruce about like what he has. Buffered into the budget, so I think we've got a decent spend, so.
Yep.
What small amount of wiggle room this year allows.
What, what's the feeling like in those meetings? Can you, can you just give me a one word answer, like, is it rough? Is it okay?
It's gonna be grace.
Okay, I got you.
It's, it's fine, it's a little awkward.
I, I budgeted, um, 2% across the board plus steps, whoever got steps, so.
So I think that the proposals that you mentioned, that you, uh, Ken, Adam have discussed were really reasonable. And I think you have some parameters that the committee has given you to sort of expand on some of those other areas that weren't really mentioned. And how you approach it, um, is up to the, the team, and, and you have some leeway there.
Yeah, I mean, we realize that we need to try to keep the total at that 2% that's in the budget. And if that's. You know, 1% and adding steps comes, jumps pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm.
And who is the, um, person that speaks, is it Adam? Or?
Depends, typically, he does, he does more than presenting, Becky's there with us too. Thanks for all your time, Katie.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready for this to wrap up after that long MOA, and that's this one, it's been a long time.
Yeah, I appreciate you hanging in for this year, it's, I really appreciate it, I know we at the school appreciate it.
This is my, uh, my final school committee gesture before I'm done, but there's new interest, so. You guys are gonna have people, and it definitely won't be me, and it most likely won't be Jenny there. Okay, so we'll see where it goes.
Well, that's too bad.
Well, Dan said she, she's right where I was last time, she'll do it again if nobody else will, but I think you're gonna get. Some people with kids active in the school that are interested, and I think that's a good thing.
That's great.
All right, so is there anything else before we, uh, motion to adjourn and we go back into public session? I'll do my best to get us back in there. Okay, thank you all very much, and, uh, we'll roll call vote out and come back into public session. Hey, Zion?
I'm going, good night.
Good night.
Bye, Jackie.
Bye, Jackie.
Brianna, aye?
I'll speak, when I.
Sullivan, aye?
Okay, and setting this up, Dan. Somehow I can admit people, Katie.
There you go.
Because I never left the meeting for some reason, so.
Oh, that's the key, huh?
Must be. Learn something every day.
I was a co-host before, but I don't think I am anymore. Now you're, you're listed as the host, Bruce.
Oh.
Not sure how it happened.
I stayed in the meeting, must be staying in the meeting, make sure the host.
I don't know.
So where's Dan?
That's a great question.
Poor Jen, I feel bad. Little COVID vaccine. Taking her down, that stinks.
Yeah, but it seems the second shot, Lauren. Max.
I had a really hard time with the second shot.
Max. Other people.
I was sick for a day with it, but then I had trouble, it triggered some autoimmune stuff.
Oh geez, better now?
I'm on my way.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that stinks. I had one, so I don't have a.
There's Dan.
I don't know yet.
Were you already all on?
Somehow.
Apparently Bruce is the host now. Oh, no, not anymore, it said he was.
Yeah, but I, I stayed in the meeting. And, and, um, I allowed everybody else back in, so.
So that doesn't mean any of that was recorded, right?
No.
Okay. All right, so all we need to do is make a motion. Uh, to. Uh, make a motion to accept the memorandum, memorandum of agreement. Between the Shrewsbury Elementary School and the Shrewsbury Elementary, Elementary Educators. Uh, regarding, um. Martina Julie.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it passes unanimously. I'll sign this and get it over to Pam tomorrow. So if there is nothing else? Anything else?
Mm-mm.
All right, I do really appreciate all of your patience with me, with this technology, and, uh.
And I'm totally laughing because we all have had to, I wasn't laughing at you, it's just.
Oh, I don't, you can laugh at me, I wouldn't care. I laugh at myself, but I do appreciate all of the time and effort that you all put into this, all right? All right, thank you very much, and you all have a nice evening, the meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, bye, everybody.
Oh, somehow.